Hi, everyone. Welcome to Navigating New Narratives with Cheyenne and Rainelle. Very nice to have you back with us. Joining us today is the Acting Mayor of Branford. His name is Richard and he is going to talk to us today about some of the issues that he's bringing forth to council that he feels is very much worth looking at and it's worth, it's worth the discussion and problems that need to be addressed. So I'm gonna put the, give the floor over to you, Richard, and I'm gonna let you introduce yourself, your title, what you've been doing, and just kind of what message you wanted to get across to our viewers.
Well, thank you very much. I'm councillor Richard Carpenter, but it's Mayor of the Month. The Mayor of the Month is really a formal process where every one of us takes the term being Mayor of the Month. You have to have that as a council. If the mayor's not available to sign legal documents, so it is a legal term, but it's not really the acting mayor. It's the Mayor of the Month when the mayor cannot attend things or do things.
Okay.
That's what it's for. But I've been a city councillor for Ward 4 for 35 years. To the Branford, I've seen just about everything. And so I've been touring the small, tiny homes and some of the better than, the better encampments, some of them are called, but the locations where they're providing housing for those in need. And a lot of them, of course, have addiction issues, and there's certain rules, but they can have, it's their home, it's a small home, it's actually something they can be proud of, you know, they can play their music. You know, if they got air conditioning and they got heating and they're, they're, you know, no bigger than a, smaller than a small bedroom, really. But it's theirs and it's, and they have rules and they learn to adjust by the rules. But it needs to have, we need to have, we need to move forward with this. We need to move forward with not just housing. You know, we had this problem after World War II. When the veterans came home, we had a shortage of housing and we built tiny homes. They were supposed to be temporary and, and they're, they're war homes. They're still here. We still have them all over the city and every city has them.
Right.
And we've got a provincial government that's saying let's build more big gigantic homes, you know, the 2,000 square foot homes that nobody can afford. Yep. Shouldn't be giving any taxpayers money away for that. You should give taxpayers money away to build affordable, under 1,000 square foot homes, in my opinion. And you know, I want to also tell you that I grew up with a single mom, 10 brothers and sisters. And I grew up in an affordable housing unit. So, and the, and the portable housing unit that I grew up in Branford was the last one ever built here by the federal provincial government, 50 years ago.
Wow.
Our provincial governments have been out of building houses for 50 years for the poor. So what's happening? The poor are now paying $2,000 a month rent for rent, $900 a month for one, for a bedroom to stay in, and then they're going to the food bank because they don't have anybody left for food. We have seniors that have had their houses paid off, little Branford cottages paid off. You know, if you're, if you're a senior couple, like my wife and I are, and one of you passes away, you lose half your income. And your, your house might be paid for, buying meat on the grocery list is off the list. So we have a lot of seniors living in poverty too, and we haven't been doing much about that. So there's, there's a lot that can be done. And of course, this provincial government, who I'm not a fan of, they do some things right. I can name the ones they did. But they do a lot wrong. But, but they haven't given an increase to the poor since 2018, since they were first elected. So you know, if you think about inflation of 3% a year, what's that doing for people? Even just changing some of the rules, for example. If you're on ODSP and you live with somebody else on ODSP, you lose your housing allowance.
Yeah.
What would that be? You know, we should have four people with, on ODSP should be able to live together. They might actually have a decent place to live, be able to afford food and maybe be able to afford a decent living.
Right.
And, and we need to provide services. We recently bought Foxridge, which is a retirement home in, in the city of Branford. And when Foxridge is in my ward, and when Foxridge was being building a new facility, also my ward of Lennon Road, I said to them, "Don't sell your facility, we want it." Because you know what? It's a, it's a retirement home that didn't meet the new standards, but it's got four wings, you know, that goes out different directions on, on it. And each one of those had two bedrooms and two beds in it and a bathroom. Well, you could take one of those beds out, add a little kitchenette, now you've got a unit. And there's lots of them in there. And I wanted that to be a treatment center. Because everything, everything I've read and research I've done on treatment, treatment doesn't work if you go for, you know, 16 weeks. We have treatment center in, in the city. SOAR does that formally. They do a good job, but if you have treatment where Richard goes to treatment and he finishes his 16 weeks, he's finished treatment, they say, "See you, Richard, bye." Where do I go? Now I go back out in the street and the only friends I have are the people that used to, I used to do drugs with. And that's where I go back and say, "Hey, how you doing? Did you miss me?" Next thing you know, I'm doing drugs.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a way off. So you have to have, I wanted this, this facility, Foxridge, that we did, the city did buy. Because it's got five acres. I want to put a five-story apartment building there. That's what my goal was. And, and then you go into treatment and in the, this, this 80-bed facility, and then you go into the apartment. After treatment, rape attachment, and you volunteer a couple of days a week in treatment. So Richard can say, "Hey, Cheyenne, I know where you're, where you're at. I've been there. This is how it was for me. I made it past here." It also gives me encouragement because now I'm helping somebody else and I, and I'm the person speaking that's been there. I know what you're talking about and I'm treating you like a, with respect because, because I, I've been there. And it, it helps me stay whole. And then I get into job opportunities, you know, I, I get some, well, you know, self, well-being, you know, about my self-respect for myself, and I really realize, realize I'm, I'm important and I can do the difference. And the success rate is much hot, much higher when that happens.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely.
You're, do the research.
Speaking language right now.
It's, why is it happening North American wide? And we're not getting results. My fear is, my biggest fear is, you know, you got me down the pitch there. My biggest fear is that the public becomes immune to what they see. Or, you know, because I've heard some mayors say, "Well, we need to arrest these people. We need to force them into treatment," you know.
Doesn't work.
Well, it doesn't work for one thing and it's, it's so dangerous. Once you take one civil liberty away, where does it stop? And, and once you get us to do that, the next thing, you know, eventually it'll be, we don't like to color your house, you know. It, it can go all different directions. Freedom and free democracy and democratic society means freedom of choice. So we need to have education as well. Education should be foremost. We should be educating in the public schools about addiction and about treatment and about resource. Because you know, the kids in school will have an aunt or an uncle. But you know, or maybe a father or mother, who's an addict. And they, they need to have something to know about that. And that education starts right there and prevents them from stepping over that line. It doesn't take much to cross that line and then next thing you know, you're addicted. So it happens to everybody or anyone. And, and they, they need services and we need, we need medical services to be supplied with them. The government needs to step up eventually. I mean, we're, we're sure. You know, they always, this always crossed me because they say, you know, they make this big announcement, the Minister of Health will say, "Well, we, we, we hired 100,000 nurses last year." They don't tell you what the net was. They never tell you what the net was. They tell you how many they hired. They didn't tell you that 120 left, retired or left the, left the industry. They'll just say, "We hired 100." I'd like to know what the net was per capita, what's the net? So, you know, we, we know that if you want to help addiction, you gotta deal with it. Daryl, who's, him and I have become very good friends, as you may know, has been on the street talking to people. And I've talked to people on the street too. These are young beings, just like you are. They had careers, they had lives, they, they still have families and their families are still worried about them.
Right.
Want to do, they can, but they don't know what to do or, or what's safe to do, what's not safe to do, you know. And then we have naloxone, or not, methadone clinics, you know, in certain areas. Methadone clinics should be at every drugstore, quite frankly. Not, not particularly at this location. It should be every drugstore, you know, it should be available easily. And if it's at every drugstore, the more you spread it out throughout your community, the less impact on one particular neighbor, the less of that, that stuff that I'm worried about, that fear, the anger comes about, you know, these people are this or that. And they, they hate, or they start to say, "Well, they're organized crime" or "They're doing this to do, doing..." An addict, an addict's day is more stressful than any day we would ever, ever experience for what it has for them just to stay alive. You know, just to, to not be sick. You know, so teaching, teaching kids in school about what an addict's sickness is, what addiction is, what it feels like and, you know, so some empathy can be there and some understanding. Because the next generation is gonna have to push governments forward to say, you know, "You gotta spend some money here." Like this is, you're gonna spend, you're spending it, either you're spending it at the ambulance service, you're spending it at the hospital, you're spending it at the police services. You're spending it anyways. The cost is always going to be there.
Right.
So fixing up, you know, I learned young that fixing the problem at the source is always the key. Fix it at the beginning and stay with it, like. Addiction treatment is, is a lifelong, an addict is a lifelong thing. If you're whether it's alcohol or drugs or what it might be, it's a lifelong, it's a career. You're, you're, you're a career addict and you're a career fighting it. You always must be on guard. My father was an alcoholic. And he beat it. And so I'm aware that, that, that gene's in me. And because it's, it's, it is an illness. And it's, illnesses are genetic.
Right.
And you can have a genetic disposition to the illness. So you have to be aware, we need to be aware about all these things so that we can say, okay, so for me, it's like, "No, I don't think I need that third drink. Two's good." You know, I don't have to do that. And so because I'm aware of it, you know, and that's, it's helpful. So education, we need, we need to have follow-up treatment, though we need to have, we need, sorry, we need medical assistance on a regular basis. We need to have support groups like you do for AA or any other addiction. We need, we need, we need to have harm reduction. We have a lot of these services in our community, by the way, usually underfunded.
Yeah.
Usually, and they'll tell you that they're doing their best with what the resources they have and it's just not enough funding. And, and I'm not sure whether the funding model that the province gives us for this is, just so they give you a little bit so they can say that they're funding it.
Yeah.
But they're, they're, they're losing the battle because we're, we're, we're still fighting in our community for a hospital. You know, it was, it was a conservative government at the time that closed down our, our second hospital that we had when Mike Harris was in place. So we've seen, we've seen these short-term thinking come into long-term pain. And now we're looking for a new hospital. We're, even if we get a site next year or two, it'll be 10 years after that before a hospital is built. And then people need doctors and healthcare and so forth. And our community is one of the fastest-growing communities in Southern Ontario.
Right.
So I know a lot, sorry.
No, no. That was, you, you've spoken on pretty much every issue that we speak about on our podcast all, all the time. And Rainelle is one of the biggest champions for everything that you're saying when it comes to, when it comes to long-term treatment. Saying, you know, 16 weeks and then goodbye, you know, go back onto the street and, you know, you'll be fine. That is completely wrong in all ways, shapes and forms. Rainelle's a huge champion for after.
Yeah. So there's, there's, um, there's like, actually like centers here in, in the city that I live in where it's one month. It's one month, like four weeks.
Wow.
And yeah, it's incredible. Now when I-
We're doing better. We're even doing better on affordable housing, but it's not near enough.
Oh, well, that's exactly it, right? And we're starting to experience in my community here exactly what you're talking about, anger towards the situation, which is causing, like, we were, our city councillors and our mayor and everything, we're working towards like the tiny home situation, but so many of the community members are angry and upset with it that they couldn't decide on a location. Every location that was proposed got turned down because there's too many complaints from neighbors and citizens of the city that didn't want, not in my backyard kind of situation, but it's like they're upset that they're seeing everybody on the streets and all, all of these things that are happening, but no one can decide on a location. So it's just like, it's just, it was supposed to be ready for the winter. It's not. So we have a ton of encampments in where I live and we don't, there's no solution for the winter coming up, right? And it's frustrating. I work in an agency that's very strong believed about harm reduction. And in our city right now, harm reduction is under, it's under threat right now. Like, a lot of people are moving more to like the abstinent-based programming, which, like, if that's your path, that's great, but I believe in all people, all pathways. So harm reduction is, is under threat. But I work at a harm reduction agency and we're, we're so big on harm reduction promotion, like harm reduction as a tool as of recovery, right? So, um, yeah, a lot of the things that you're talking about are just like, it's, it's incredible to, it's incredible to hear because that's like exactly what Cheyenne and I stand for on such like a passionate, strong base.
Yeah.
Like I went to treatment in B.C. And I was out there for like seven months and I went to second stage, which was like a huge aspect of what I learned and what I'm trying to bring forward. I wish that we saw it more, more because I would say like 80% of the people that I had gone to treatment with are still doing well when they had aftercare and continued support.
Right.
Yeah, and, and you know, and SOAR does have clinics around the community too, where they can drop in. They have services, an outreach service. We have an outreach team that goes up to encampments, you know, with four individuals and nursing, you know, we have medical staff that go out as well to try and make connections and find out who's out there. What are you doing and how can we help, you know? But we, but there's just not enough full wraparound, full treatment services to get to a conclusion that you're gonna also not be homeless when you're done. You're gonna actually be home. You're gonna have a home as part of the process of being clean. And it's, it's a struggle even at that rate. Even then, you know, maybe you'll save seven out of 10. That'd be great. Saving seven would be great. But it's a step in the right direction, but it just seems to me that the steps are just not being taken. Every time you take it, like you say, you know, as politicians, we should know better. As citizens, they don't know. And the citizens in my ward, where, where now they're going to use Foxridge for a hospice, or sorry, hostel, the residents are frightened because the hostel that's in downtown is, uh, they're sort of all over the place downtown and they see that's gonna happen in my neighborhood. So they're not too happy with me, but as I wanted it to be a treatment center. And there's some members of council, and the council has decided it's gonna be a number of things. One of them not being a treatment center, but some training for nursing and some family, family housing, which is, is better than, and, but it has to have proper security and the proper things in place to make sure that things don't go awry that makes people turn against it in the first place. If you don't do a proper to start with and something happens, you know, then they're gonna blame, they'll, they'll put the blame on them because there's fear, you know, and public's fearful. They, they see, you know, addicts downtown falling over on the street and they go, "Now, now you're putting that into my neighborhood or in my backyard." That's how they see it.
Yes.
Because we haven't been doing it, you know, all, all of us Canada-wide, we haven't been doing it. Ontario specifically, we haven't been doing it. The largest populated province, you know. The one thing the provincial government's supposed to do is healthcare and education. You know, and I'm not seeing, you know, I'm not, I'm not seeing the healthcare. Certainly I'm not seeing addiction treatment. I'm not seeing and housing. And the federal provincial government is their responsibility to do housing. The problem with we as a city do housing. Here's the, municipalities should never be in the housing business, but we are because we have no choice, because somebody's gotta do it. And so we're taking it off your property taxes, which is the most aggressive tax form, residency, your property taxes, because you're paying your taxes after you've already had your income taxes deducted, then you're paying your property taxes. Where businesses are paying, you know, their property taxes, then deducting it off their income when they do their taxes. So they, but it's before for them. So that's why it should come off of earnings from the income tax, income taxes, not property taxes. So the, so then what happens is we, we build housing, for example. We build a, you know, small housing unit, 77 beds, you know, and then we, the mayor's gonna wanna do ribbon cutting and we're gonna wanna celebrate that we got 77 new beds, do the ribbon cutting, and everybody reads it in the paper, "Oh, let's go to Branford, they got housing."
Yeah.
Because you could be on every housing list in Ontario. I could put my name on every housing list in Ontario. You know, as opposed to, "Do you live here? Does your father live here?" And there isn't services. Another thing we can do for housing too is we can, we can double up on the seniors that are living. There's 10 million empty bedrooms in Ontario because there's a senior living in a house with three, three bedrooms and she's only taken up one. And we gotta find a way to, to make that work, to help the seniors out at the same time can be done. We need to make sure we can fill those bedrooms and have people work together. And we get rid of the rules that prevent people that are receiving income support services from, from living together. Encourage it, in fact.
Right.
We can use up the, and then for the federal, for the province's side of it, don't be giving grants for large 2,000 square foot, $850,000 houses. Give grants for 1,000 square foot houses, under 1,000 square foot houses. Let's build smaller houses.
Yeah.
We have a housing company in town that builds portable housing. You know, they built it in a factory. Factory housing is the future. Carney's absolutely right with that. And the federal government just announced a billion dollars for housing. And they want to match it with the province. So the federal government's getting back in the housing game, building houses, and so is the province. So, and that's what they should never have left. So that 50-year deficit's gonna take a long time to fix. It really, it's not gonna happen overnight. And, but they need to get, they need to get to it. Like Branford has got north side of Branford, North apartment rows. We've got the expansion lands, we call them. We've got thousands of acres. They're gonna be developed for new housing. Why aren't we buying blocks of housing there? Why isn't the federal provincial government buying blocks in there for some of, where I grew up, 50-unit townhouse complex with a single mom? Why aren't they building those in every block? When I say block, not neighborhood block, but they're large blocks of land. Why aren't they buying a piece of that in every block for the future portable housing units? Well, they haven't.
Um, Daryl was telling me that you have been around looking at these little portable house, how, homes. So where have you been and, and what did they, what did it look like? Like how, how was it situated?
Well, we went to Kitchener to, to Better, Better, Better Tent City, they call it, and they were like $2,000 midnight-built sheds, wooden sheds. And they had a different system and it was run by independent contractors and you, the only way in was through the front door. The back door was a highway, which wasn't accessible and fencing was surrounded at all. So it was a safe community. It was, we went there, we went by one of the homes, sheds, we'll call them homes, but, and the music was just Blair. A person was in there in their unit just enjoying their music. You could hear them singing along to it, you know, because that's, that's home, right? Now you and I would, I'm sure you do it at home. I know, I do it in the car, but you know, so you're enjoying, they're enjoying their home and they know, and they got their dog with them, which is probably the only thing that loves them, that they know loves them, that they love back. It keeps them, you know, sharing that emotion, which is important. And they got their home and they had, they know they, in that place, they have to unplug the air conditioner if they turn the microwave on. And, and in the summertime, they gotta, wintertime, they gotta unplug the heater if they turn the microwave on. They know that. They wanna heat up their coffee or whatever it is. And so it's their home. And they, they meet in the main lounge where they have to reserve space for washer and dryer to clean their clothes. And there's outside and a separate unit for washing and showers. And it's, it seemed to work. It works, you know, you have to make sure that you get the right mixture of people that work together. And I guess how they did that was originally one person came with 10 other people when they first started. And then the friends that visited seemed to get along. When they were getting along and visiting, they said, "Would you like a home?" And that's how they, that's how they grew it. So they already knew there was compatibility amongst the groups.
Yeah, I love that. My gosh.
Yeah, it worked very well. And they knew that, look, and, and people move from there. It's really transitional housing in the sense that once the portable housing is available for them somewhere else, they move on there. And if they had, and there, there was a, a police officer that came there once, once a day and sat down at a table. If you wanted to talk to them about anything, you had your choice, you know, the no, you know, pretty free, no, no, no prejudging, just whatever on your mind. And that was always an opportunity. And the, the food bank visited regular. They had regular visits from the fire department to make sure everything was safe. And they had visitation from social workers. They had outreach for, for if you wanted a treatment, it was, was available. They knew where it was and it was easy accessible. So it kind of made them feel like we're human beings and we're, we are cared for and we do make a difference and we can make choices. And we're not stuck, you know, so there, there was a lot of hope there as I saw. And, and people were really proud of their little home. You know, and we, Erbsville was the, the other one we went to in Kitchener, that was run by the region. And they were, they were better units because they were steel units. They were fully insulated. They had heat and air conditioning as well. Both the same size. I got a picture of Daryl sitting on a bed in one of them. But it was, it was same thing, it was about 48 units, about the same number. And they, and you couldn't, visitors could not come in sight on the site. You had one visitor, you go outside. And that prevented any kind of, they learned to make certain rules to prevent problems from cropping up in the first place. And it was sort of in an industrial area out of the way. So people are, there's a fear of the homeless, tremendous fear of the homeless, right? Most people don't wanna talk to them. They wanna ask them this and that because they're, they're really quite, they don't know who they are. They don't, they're frightened and they don't know, they don't know how to help. You know, sometimes I think giving them money is the way to help, you know, and that's not always the way. Sometimes the money's gonna go towards more drugs. You know, you wanna help, you wanna help do food, donations to, to the organization that helped them, speaking to your government, what addiction treatment centers. We need more and more people to speak up to our MPPs, those that, you know, they're living in the ivory tower and they're 800,000 square foot home and, and eating caviar at all these events and doing real well and forgetting what it's like to even be homeless or to be hungry at all.
Right. Right. And people, people that are in those situations, they don't, they don't, they just, I, I don't wanna use the word ignorant, but just like they're just, they're just not, they just haven't experienced it. They just haven't had it close to them to know, you know, what it feels like or what, or what, what it might be like to be in their shoes or be in their situation. So you know, until it's talked about and until it's put into people's faces and, and people are, are aware of, of the situation and that these people are human beings and that there's nothing to be scared of. They've just been dealt a bad hand in life or they've just been dealt, you know, a bad hand genetically when it comes to addiction or whatever the case may be. They're just, they're just human beings in need of a helping hand. And that's, that's all it is. And-
And I think it's anecdotal for me in the sense that I think people are afraid that, you know, there for the grace of God go I. This could have, I, I could be homeless in six months.
Oh.
I could, my job, or I could become an addict tomorrow and it could take a year, but I could lose everything I have. Because we talked to these people. They were all working productive citizens at one time and things happened to them. You know, and they say, "Well, it's your fault." Well, it's not your fault that you're an addict, you know, that's a disease. You know, is it your fault you got cancer? You know, is it your fault you're a diabetic? You know, is it your fault that, that you've got Z's, A, B and C? No, no, it, it's, it's a matter of course, but the treatment needs to be there. Could you imagine that there was no, we didn't, we didn't have treatment for cancer? Of course you gotta have treatment for cancer because it's a disease. And we need to have treatment for addiction for the same reasons. And we have to think of it in the same way. And yes, people are afraid. They're afraid that it might happen to them. And they're afraid to look, to look at it because it could be them.
Right.
That's how I see it.
It's funny you say that because I, I put a post out on Facebook comparing addiction to cancer and it got a lot of backlash, but it, it's, it's true. Like you need-
Any disease.
Yes, any disease is exactly the same. There's, there's predisposition, there's factors that get involved that get you to that point. Then there is, you know, the symptoms of the disease and then there's the treatments of the disease and-
Obesity is a disease, you know, and people say, "Well, it's your fault because you ate." No, it's a disease. My goodness. And we're, we're finally recognizing it. There's some drugs out now to help, help with that disease that's coming along. People are starting to take it. Zepic, you know, being one of them, right? So there's diseases that we, we just have to recognize that, that instead of just sort of looking at them like they're a problem, you need to look at the government and say, "Why aren't you providing treatment? Why isn't there resources so that we can solve this problem?" It will always be there, but ignoring it will make it even worse. And it's costing us more anyway. So it's not like we're saying you need to spend more of your tax dollars. You need to reallocate the dollars from here, from hospitals, from places over to treatment and homelessness. Because, because if you do that, you're gonna have a more productive society. People are, people are worth the risk and they're worth the challenge.
Yep.
Sorry. I come from 10 brothers and sisters, so you know, I know.
Yeah.
The council's not a strange thing for me because there's 10 members of council and a mayor. That's 11. So same, I grew up with that all the time. That's why I talk fast, by the way.
Yeah. That's okay. I like fast talkers. Yeah. And I know you do have an event to get to very shortly. So you know, we're very happy that you took your time to come on the show and to express your views as a councillor in this way because I'm, I'm living right near Branford. I actually work at SOAR, which is kind of funny. Yeah, speaking about SOAR, but I'm just a casual worker. I, I'm doing a master's in addiction stigma at Brock. So I'm here in Southern Ontario, but I'm originally from Thunder Bay with Rainelle. Um at Brock, so I'm here in Southern Ontario, but um I'm originally from Thunder Bay with Raynell. And uh Thunder Bay councillors and Thunder Bay. Aren't as progressively thinking as you are um in these topics. So it's very refreshing to hear and um and I think it's a, I think it's a topic that Branford needs to hear. And I think it's a topic that Thunder Bay needs to hear as well, as well as all over Ontario, like you said, you know. Treatment, we need treatment centers, we need more directed towards the goal of helping instead of the goal of punishing. Cause they're not, it's not about punishment. It's 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 about help. They need help, not, they don't need to be criminalized. And that's what a lot of these places are doing is they're criminalizing drug addicts and it's not.
My fear and they're convincing the population to criminalize it too. That's my worry. That is my. My my worry is that this the the funding is structured funding to get to a an end game. I hope not.
Some of the things that I like, we need less Band-Aid solutions and we need to actually start thinking. Um bigger and further ahead on how how we can peel, like how communities can actually make an impact. In positively addressing these situations that we're seeing. Because what's, what, at least in my community, what we're seeing right now is like a lot of Band-Aid solutions that actually aren't pushing people forward. Or allowing people the opportunity to get the supports that they that actually make a long term positive impact in their lives, right? And a lot of like.
They're more costly. Cause you do them, you do them with very little success or you do them two or three times. I mean, the end, the end of the day, you have, you have. You need homes for people, small homes for people, and you need full treatment centers with places to go. Wraparound services and follow up treatment on an ongoing basis and you need to do it all the time. Every city with a population of a hundred thousand or more needs to have it and the province needs to get off their butt and fund it.
Amen to that.
Amen. Yes, we should, well, leave it at that. I think that's a great way to end that, cause I know you have to be somewhere at six. You know what? That's beautiful. Thank you so. Yes.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for being here. All right. Bye, everybody. Thank you for tuning in. We'll talk soon. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much for what you're doing. I'm gonna be, you got a new listener now.
Yes, definitely. All right, guys.